I want to welcome everyone here to the February. February Board Meeting. I'm glad you're all here.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm doing good. How are you?
Good. Alex, if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and about your time in Springville.
Yeah, so my journey through Springville schools started at Harp Elementary. And then from there, I went to J.L. Kelly Middle School, then George Junior High, and now I'm at Springville High School. And some of the things I'm involved in in Springville High School is I'm a part of the Engineering Academy. I've been a member for three years now. And so one of the things that the Engineering Academy does is your senior year, you get to participate in the capstone class. And so the idea is that you take all these classes in engineering, and so that your senior year, you get to incorporate what you learned in all of them into one project. And last year, or this year, my project was a prosthetic arm. And I mean, something that I'm still working on, but I kind of want to do like a twist on it. I mean, it's just gonna be a 3D-printed prosthetic arm, but I want to try to make it mind-controlled. I mean, I don't know how that's gonna go yet, but there's these headsets that can detect brainwaves. So whenever you like concentrate, your brain emits these deep waves and the headset can actually detect them. It can't detect what you're thinking, it just knows that you're thinking. So potentially, you can connect this headset to control it to close like the prosthetic arm whenever you concentrate. So I'm gonna see how that goes, but I think it's definitely doable. But right now, just with the time constraint, I'll see where it goes. And then I'm also the president of Muawafah Theta, which is a mathematics honor society. I played basketball up until all the way through my 11th grade year. I mean, obviously, senior year, I just had to shift my priorities. What else? Some accomplishments I've earned is I've been named a LITA scholar, which I'll talk about more in a minute. And I've been named a Presidential Scholar candidate. And also, a few weeks ago, right before we went on Christmas break, I found out that I was accepted into Stanford. So I mean, I really couldn't, I never expected to be in this position. As a matter of fact, my junior year, I was pretty dead-set on going to the U of A. I wasn't even considering any other options. I wasn't going to apply to any other schools. But as I said, I was named a LITA scholar my junior year. And what LITA is, it's this program that begins your junior year. And they select 100 students from all over the country. And I guess their main goal is to get students from underrepresented backgrounds into the nation's top universities, because a lot of the nation's leaders come from those schools. So in getting students from underrepresented backgrounds into top schools, they're trying to diversify America's leadership. Oh, and I forgot to mention, LITA stands for Leadership Enterprise for a Diverse America. And in the non-COVID year, right after your junior year, you go to Princeton University for seven weeks. And there, you take college guidance classes, you take writing classes. And I mean, it's not like an English class. It's more of writing classes preparing you for college and for the essays that you're about to write. And then something that new that they added fairly recently is an aspects of leadership class. So I mean, you just read, you read about leaders from the past so that you get an idea of what type of leader that you want to be. And I mean, I was accepted under early action, which is a non-binding decision. So I haven't till made to decide, and I decided that I'mma wait it out and just look at all my other options.
Do you know what you want to study?
I'mma go into bioengineering. I don't know if I'mma stick with it. I'm just really interested in like the intersection of engineering, medicine, technology. So I know that I'll definitely stay like within that, but I don't know if I'll stick with bioengineering.
I had to get a lesson on frugal science. I don't know what that is, but hey, it sounds good. So there's a video out there with this guy you mentioned.
Yeah.
So that's pretty cool.
Yeah, so Manu Prakash is a professor of bioengineering at Stanford. And he was really one of the main reasons that Stanford was my top choice school. So his idea is that if you make like a medical innovation expensive, you potentially cut millions of people from using it. So like whenever you're trying to come up with solutions to healthcare problems, you really have to focus on cost. Because keeping an invention low-cost will make it more accessible to other people. And he's really known for inventing the Foldscope, which is a foldable microscope. And it kind of works like, it's like this origami thing. And there's an instruction, and there's like a little bulb that you put in, and it teaches you how to make a microscope. And then the paper fuge, which is a centrifuge made from like paper and stream. And those two devices are facilitating the diagnosis of malaria in third-world countries. And they both, they have a cost of 68 cents.
That's crazy.
So I just thought, I thought it was really cool that like such inexpensive inventions could have a huge impact. And I guess that's why it interested me.
And you didn't mention your ACT score.
Yeah, I have a 35 on the ACT. And it was even closer, because that last time I took it, it was one question away from the 36. But it wasn't worth it for me to take it again. I don't care. I was zone with that test. Yeah, and I also hold ACT tutoring every morning before school, so.
Like for just anyone at?
If anyone comes in, but.
Does that scholarship that you mentioned earlier, does it only apply to Stanford, or would it go to other?
It wasn't, I mean, I was just accepted to Stanford, and they give you a generous financial aid package. So, yeah.
Yeah, you need a generous package so you can go study frugal science.
Yeah, it took me twice to get 36, but it was.
You had them together?
Are there any teachers or anyone in the Springville schools that really impacted you in this journey?
Yeah, so I mean, I guess the first teacher that comes to mind is my calculus teacher, Andrea Edmondson. I've had her for three years now, my entire high school career, because she's an Engineering Academy teacher. I just really like the way that she teaches. I feel like she really cares about like each student. She really wants each student to learn and just to like prove to themselves that they're smarter than what they think they are. And I mean, everyone in that class has been in the same class for the entire three years, so I guess that's what makes it funnier, too.
Would you like to introduce your parents?
Oh, yes. My parents are back there. They are Daniel and Maria Soto.
Well, we are incredibly proud of you and cannot wait to see what you do and where you end up. And I sure hope that you'll come back after college and let us know what you're doing.
Yeah, definitely.
What you've invented.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Wow, that's a great way to. A great way to start a meeting. Board, you've had the agenda for a couple of days. Are there any changes or?
Do you want to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
A motion by Mrs. Creek.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hutchinson to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Board, you've also had the consent agenda. Any questions?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Bell to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Hutchinson. You know, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Hutchinson doesn't just serve on the Springville School Board. He volunteers to spend time, his own personal time, on another board, which is the Arkansas School Board Association Board. And he may be president in the near future. In fact, we believe he's gonna want to do that. But a lot of things have happened statewide and nationally with the NSBA and now ASBA. And Mr. Hutchinson and I discussed the opportunity for him to kind of give a report, not only to the board as a whole, but also to the public. Is that all right with you, Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, it's gonna be short and sweet. I mean, the gist of it is Arkansas School Board Association did pull out of the National School Boards Association. We were, at the time, I think, the 16th or 17th state association that had done that. I'm not sure what the numbers are right now. But we are now in full swing trying to figure out how we're gonna replace NSBA and do it the right way without all the stuff that comes with a humongous national association. And we have, we've come up with a new organization called the Consortium of State School Board Associations. And I know that we are one of, I believe, 13, let's see here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Actually, one of 17 founding state associations. And those 17 states are gonna be getting together on a regular basis, putting together this new consortium. And we're gonna be moving forward with that. And we're gonna cut out all the stuff that doesn't need to be there. It's gonna be there for the purposes that it should be there for. And we're working on a new conference. I know the annual conference is always a big deal for school board members. It gives you a chance to get together and talk about stuff and get your training and things like that. There's not gonna be one this year. The only trip that we're gonna have this year is the New Orleans trip for the regional meeting. But sometime next spring, March, April of 2023, they're working toward having a big conference like we did with NSBA. We don't know where yet, don't know exactly when yet. The only time that was available this year was Mother's Day and Easter. And we're not gonna do it over those weeks, obviously, so there was just no way to do it this year. So anyway, there's still a lot to come. Arkansas has got a seat on the front row of making this new organization get off the ground and work, so that's pretty cool to be a part of that. Dr. Prothrow, who runs the Arkansas School Boards Association, will be kind of our point person on that, along with our president-elect, William, shoot, I forgot his last name, who serves on the ASBA board. He'll be president next year, the year before I become president. So he'll be serving on that committee with Dr. Prothrow, and I'll get regular updates and I'll bring them forward as I get them. So that's basically it. I'll answer any questions if anybody, I'll try to answer any questions if anybody has any. Okay. Thanks, sir. Next, I want to introduce Ms. Clay. Ms. Clay, we're gonna talk a little bit about COVID leave and the experience that we've gone through with this Omicron variant, how it's impacted quarantines and our staff.
Good evening, Board. Although it's separate on the agenda, it makes sense for me to update you on our COVID numbers as we talk about the COVID leave policy. So if it's okay, I'll do that, and then we'll talk about the COVID leave policy. It's been a wild month. As you look at these numbers that we've presented historically over the last couple of years, you'll see that this last month, since your last meeting, we had 589 staff members and 2,338 students test positive for COVID. This taxed our system of reporting, contact tracing, calling families. But I am so, so proud of the work that the nursing team did, that our principals did. We called in social workers to help make phone calls and really got through them as fast as we possibly could. Now, it wasn't as fast as we would have liked, but with this sort of number, that was our reality. Sometime during this process, we stopped really tracking the probable close contacts and which of those probable close contacts ended up positive. Because with this Omicron variant, it was just everybody. And there wasn't a way to say this person gave it to this person, because it was, everybody was basically exposed. So that's why you don't see those numbers there for February. You will see our tests-to-stay participants for February. We're 951, with 121 of those testing positive. You know, when we started tests-to-stay, we didn't really know the significance that it would have. But thinking about those 800-something students and staff that were allowed to stay in school because they were exposed and not positive really made a difference for us, I think, over the last month or so. We are seeing our numbers start to, not start to decline. They dropped off. The snow days helped a lot. And so hopefully, we're on the downward trend. These numbers are the impact survey numbers. And you'll notice this last week, you don't see any numbers reported for staff and students in quarantine. So many of you may know that last Tuesday, during his press conference, the governor made the announcement that school districts no longer were required to identify probable close contacts or quarantine those contacts. So what that means is that now, if you test positive, student or staff test positive for COVID, they do have to go home for the five days, and they're asked to wear a mask for the five days after that. But if you are exposed to someone with COVID inside school, outside school, wherever, you do not have to quarantine unless you're symptomatic. So we're getting to the point that I feel like a lot of people have been waiting for of stay home when you're sick, come to school if you're not. We pushed these new guidelines out. It was Tuesday afternoon, and then the snow day started on Wednesday. So we're just now getting to these actually being in effect. I can tell you, I got a lot, a lot of very happy and thankful emails from principals and nursing staff. Really, the contact tracing process was monopolizing their time. So we are very thankful that we're moving in the direction of where these guidelines are taking us. So all that to say, on your agenda, you see a proposal for an updated COVID leave policy. One of the things we've realized over the last month to six weeks or so is that many people were needing to take more COVID leave than was originally allotted. You all allotted 10 days for this school year. What we've seen is employees who have gotten COVID multiple times have had children quarantined multiple times. And so there are a handful of employees that have met their 10 days and even gone over that and had to use their sick days. So the proposed policy change would give employees five additional days that could cover the absences for the reasons that were already in place. We don't anticipate a lot of employees needing this, but there are some that have gone over their days for legitimate COVID-related reasons that this would benefit. but there are some that have gone over their days for legitimate COVID-related reasons that this would benefit. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I do need a motion and a vote on the amended COVID leave policy.
So the COVID leave, if a teacher has used their days and they had to go into sick days, they will get their sick days back?
Yes, once, if you all approve this, we will have to have the entire staff vote on it because it will be a change to personnel policies in the middle of the school year. After that, we'll send out instructions on how to get reimbursed for those days that they may have gone over. So how to convert the sick days back to COVID days. So yes, they will get reimbursed.
And can you explain where the reimbursement?
Yes. Any leave that is taken for one of the qualifying reasons in the policy, we are allowed to use our ESSR funds for that and code that specifically. So it takes it away from the other dollars that we would use to pay for leave on a normal sick day or personal day.
Is this policy for just this year or is it in perpetuity?
It is for just this year. It expires at the end of this school year.
Plus 10, plus 5?
Yes. Already 10 in place, it would be adding an additional 5.
I'm just saying, if they have 15 days and they don't use it, it doesn't carry over. Like it's June 30th.
Do you have any more questions, Mr. Hutchinson?
No, I'm just thinking about it. I thought about it, just thinking about it. 15 days, that's a lot. I mean, that's a lot, but.
It is tonight's privilege. My questions were about funding, but you already answered that, so.
Board, any more discussion or do I have a motion?
How many staff do you think this impacts like right now?
About 60% of our staff have taken some COVID leave. About 430, I believe, was the number, have taken at least five days and 120 or so have taken their maximum of 10.
So out of the 120, like some number of those have probably gone over?
Yes, yes.
So what happens if, when they do go over their regular sick time? Is it just unpaid time?
So if they've used all of their COVID days and then they've used all of their sick days, if they're a certified employee, they go into what we call sub-doc days. So they're still paid their salary, their daily rate of pay minus the cost of a sub. So they would still get some pay for those days. And there's 15 sub-doc days. For classified staff, once they use all of their sick days, they do go into doc status. Or vacation days, if they have vacation days too, they could use those, but.
I do see it as because the final decision on this one is not with us, correct? It is with the staff, I mean, the entire staff has to vote on it. We are giving them an opportunity to vote on it. So that is a thought. It's still an opportunity.
Can you tell me just a little bit about like the process, like of coming up with this? Like what group was involved in coming up with this?
Sure, so the original COVID leave, let's go back to March and even August of 2020. Originally, COVID leave was mandated by both the federal government and the state government. I believe those provisions expired in December of 2020. But many districts then came around and said, hey, this leave is expiring, but we're still experiencing COVID leave. So they came up with their own policies that largely mirrored the federal and state policies. So the language of the policy stems from what we had originally that was required. We tweaked it a little bit because we've learned a lot over the last two years and some of the language didn't make a lot of sense. Our policy specifically has been shared with PPC. And just among colleagues and peers in other districts have, we've shared language, language of policies to kind of all have similar. They're not all exactly the same, but similar language and provisions.
I meant specifically adding the five days. Like what group, like was it brought from the building level?
Yeah, we, Dr. Cleveland and I and others began getting questions, specifically in the last month of, hey, you know, I've already used X number of days or I've already used this many days, what happens if I get COVID? Is there gonna be additional leave? And so Dr. Cleveland brought it forward and asked that we put it before the PPC Personnel Policy Committee. Personal Policy Committee had asked about, are there gonna be additional days? So that is how we landed on the expanding it five additional days.
When it began is when the Omicron surge started way up. And there was fear about, oh my goodness, what happens if? And so the thought process was this. Take care of our employees. And having these ESSR dollars, that is a designated approved way to track it. And if we use those ESSR dollars for the people who have had COVID or who have been quarantined, even though that's off now, there are still people who may be positive and could impact their families. But it won't be a whole lot. So right now, she's right, 104 employees have used 10 days. 413 have used five or more, between 5 and 10. So that's not a huge amount. The interesting part about that is we do pay out of ESSR and that saves our local dollar. So it's a win for the district too that way, and it also protects our employees. So we were thinking in that regard.
One thing to mention too, although the quarantines have been pulled back for public schools, many childcare facilities are still doing that. It's kind of unclear on the requirements for the daycare facilities. And I mean, I can just say from personal experience, I've used seven COVID leave days and no one in my family has had COVID, but because of quarantine and childcare issues, which is what I think we saw a lot with the employees who were reaching out, having gone over their days.
So how do you, how do you approve COVID leave?
So last year, we had a pretty extensive approval process and that everyone came to me with documentation and I looked at it and approved it. What we found is that it was really difficult and there was a lot of back and forth of, you know, this doesn't have your date, your name, this doesn't have the date. This year, what we did is we have the employee sign an affirmation form. It's a Google form online. They're saying that they affirm that their reason for leave is one of the reasons listed in the policy and that they'll provide documentation if asked.
You didn't want to do 3,000 confirmations in a month?
It was overwhelming. What really spawned that was the home test coming about right towards the end of the last school year. When the home test came on the scene, you could get a picture of a positive test online and we don't know if it's, I mean, it just became, the approval process became obsolete, basically, because we weren't really approving anything.
And let me interject here, the timing of this is a little odd because Omicron was.
Mr. Hayes, do you mind to come to the microphone?
Some people online can hear.
Thank you, sir. That's what you get for standing up.
You know, just like everyone, we were watching our Omicron numbers and they were just, we were having a lot of employees have another surge of absences due to COVID. And so that was part of our thinking. And then the governor now has come out and relaxed the quarantining, which wasn't in place at the time. So between missing for Omicron or having to quarantine, we knew some of our employees would need more than 10 days potentially. Just as Kendra has stated, she's already used seven, but nobody's gotten sick in her house yet. We think that because of these, we think that, we think that with the quarantine changes and with the Omicron going down, we don't think it'll be used very much. We just hated to penalize those through no fault of their own. They had to miss work because of quarantining and being sick.
So I guess we've got to chase. Can we manage it and keep, keep, keep an eye on it and not let it get abused?
You bet, you, you bet. I think we can.
Even through the surge, does it interfere through the data that we've collected that our employees are abusing? Yeah, I'm not saying we are. When you manage people, that's just, that's part of it.
Well, I think not, you know, our limited sub-capacity. And we just turned down.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just asking some real questions.
And we do allow substitutes to use it. And that's a question that we've gotten quite a bit. So it's an encouragement for subs to continue to come, knowing that if they do have to go home because they've been exposed, that there's some paid leave involved for them.
I'm okay with it, if it's got into it.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move. I've only got three people.
Start all over. It took forever to get one.
Debbie Sergeant.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the COVID leave amendment as to its update, as dated February 8th, 2022.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Ms. Creek, a second by Mr. Ramos, to approve the COVID policy as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining everything to us. We appreciate it.
I appreciate y'all approving that. I know many teachers in my building, none of them have had COVID two or three times, but a lot of our teachers, especially young teachers, have kids in daycare. And that daycare teacher got COVID, they sent their little three and four and five-year-olds that haven't been vaccinated home and they had to stay home with them. So I know that's come up in PPC numerous times. I'm running out, what are we gonna do? I don't have the sick days because I had maternity. And so we thoroughly appreciate you allowing us to do that. And I will get a vote, a form sent out in the next day to the staff and be ready for the staff for Mr. Hayes to sit down, so. So our calendar vote this year, we had three calendar choices. Option B is the one that had the most vote. Calendar B had 48.9% of the vote. Calendar A had 25% of the vote. And Calendar C had 26.2% of the vote. I knew we wouldn't have a full over 50% with having three options this year. It's just not gonna get a. The main difference this year, we had a little bit of a difference on Christmas break by, I think, a day or two and then our placement of our flex days for next year. But with the new state law saying we cannot meet, start school until August the 22nd, really had to adjust. I had some people saying, why are we having a split Christmas break? I like having two full weeks. It was having to get 40 days in each nine weeks. So by starting a week later in August, yes, that pushes a week later in June. So we will be coming back after Memorial Day this next year. And I know, nobody likes it. Dr. Smith and I worked a lot. We looked at the alternative option of using hours and minutes. But when some more information came on those, saying that we could not use AMI days if we did the alternative calendar using minutes, we didn't want to lose that option of having that ability to use AMI days. I mean, look, we've already had to use them for COVID, we've had to use them for sick days or for snow days. So we just did not want to take that as an option out of our district. So this is the calendar that we, that most of the staff, we had almost 1,550 votes. So not everybody votes, but quite a few do. And this is the calendar our district has, our teachers have voted on. So we wanted to present, do y'all have any questions on the calendar?
Not for you, I'd like to have some questions for Little Rock.
Yes.
Thank you for all the work on it. I know calendars are complicated and when we throw in votes from state legislature, but for us, parents, athletics, all of the above, it makes it very complicated. And we appreciate the time that has been put into this.
You, I try to make it where, I try to listen to teachers and people and, and sometimes I'm like this, it, some things are just, it is what it is. The start date.
So the one we have.
It should say Option B at the top under Springdale School District. It should say Option B. That's the one that, is the one that was voted on.
Mine does not have. It, it said it on the tab.
Oh, it's on the tab, probably, yes.
It's the one where Christmas is the 21st?
Yes, ma'am. And we come, kids will come back on Thursday the 5th, teachers will come back on Wednesday the 4th. We have a flex day on October the 14th and a flex day of PD on February the 20th. Most teachers picked this calendar, I think, because they had the flex day, one in the fall and one in the spring. I put the 14th because that's War Eagle. We always had an issue trying to find subs on craft weekend. So I always make sure to put the PD flex day on that day. And then a lot of times, we normally do two PDs in October. I moved the other PD to a Monday so we didn't interrupt football on Friday nights or pep rallies or anything with sports on the football. So I tried to do the flex day on that Friday and then the other one on a Monday so it didn't interfere with football. Because that's important.
I need to brag on Ms. Ms. Rogers to admit it. She may be the most knowledgeable about how to build an academy calendar in the country. And I don't mean in the state, in the country. She's been excellent, she's a great partner, a great leader at PPC, so.
Thank you.
We're fortunate to have you, want to say that publicly.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The thing that she gets credit for this year too is there's a flex day, I believe, the Monday after the Super Bowl.
Yes, Mr. Scott loves me for it. Yeah, this year. Well, and I don't know if the football is the same weekend every single time because I thought, well, maybe that's a good idea because we, Coach Dasbit and I spoke to today, we wish the Super Bowl started a little earlier so people don't have to stay up so late. But I don't know if the football's always, it doesn't seem like the Super Bowl's always the exact same weekend every year, but it did fall this year, not only Valentine's Day, but Super Bowl weekend. So yes, I have several that love me for that. You're welcome.
How long have you done this?
I have been on PPC for about 21 years, I think, now. And I've been the leader for about 18, 19 of those. I've been in the district for 25 years, so I started pretty quick into it, I guess. Yes, just out of high school. Just out of high school.
I was gonna say, technically, you've been with the district long?
I've been the district for 25 years. I taught three years in Rogers.
I was meaning with school.
Yeah, with school from 7th grade to 12th grade at Springdale Schools. Southwest Junior High and Springdale High School.
Board, any other questions? I'm gonna say, I mean, we just have to say.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 academic calendar. Option B.
I have a motion. Mr. Ramos. A second by Mr. OMB to approve the calendar as presented. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
I'd like to, if it's okay with you, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Steckline. I know he's in the room and I believe he has guests with him. While he's on his way. Mr. Steckline has really done a great job with the Education Foundation. He's partnered with some others, some other school districts. And I think he's got some information for you and I think he's going to present you with some new information.
Good evening, Board. I have with me tonight Molly Willroth. Molly is the media specialist at Helen Tyson. She's one of our most recent grantees. She's gonna talk a little bit about the grant that she's gonna implement. And then I'm gonna give you a little bit of information about our most recent grant cycle and then talk a little bit about the sheet that you just passed around. So Molly, it's all yours.
Good evening, I'm Molly Willroth. And I am, like Mr. Steckline said, the library media specialist at Helen Tyson. And I'm a very grateful recipient of an SPS EF grant this year. With our grant at Helen Tyson, we are going to be able to bring an author to Helen Tyson to speak to our students. This year, we're going to get New York Times bestselling author Gordon Korman. He's written almost 100 books for middle school and teens. His first book, he actually wrote as a 7th grader. It was his 7th grade writing project when he was in 7th grade back in the 70s. So I'm sure the kids will get to hear about that and that's really cool for me, to be able to share that with them. His books are always some of our most popular books. We have countless in our library and they are usually, humor is his genre that he's most famous for. Also includes, though, he spans across several genres, mystery, adventure, even historical fiction. One of his latest books is Unplugged and it's actually set in Arkansas. And so that's a draw also for him. To promote him, we are going to be able to purchase one of these books for all of our kids. So all of our students will get one of the, one of his books. He's going to do two presentations, a 6th grade full presentation, a 7th grade full presentation to all of our students. And then he's going to meet with a smaller group in the library and they'll have a meet and greet where they'll get to work with him as well. We have, leading up to this, we have been promoting him since the beginning of the year with just lots of book talks and sharing his website. We've got book ch- got book challenges and book passport activities going on. We've had lots of displays. We've purchased, actually got book, copies of books for our advisory teachers to do read alouds just to get everyone ready. So we've been pumping up all the kids best we can to get ready for this, and we're just super excited. He's our, we've had author visits in the past, and we've always had wonderful ones, but this is definitely our biggest name. All the kids know who he is. So we're very excited and very grateful to the Grant Foundation.
Any questions for Molly and her, and her project?
Can you tell us when?
It is March 2nd, and that was something I put, I didn't flip my note paper over, because I was going to invite all of you. You're all very welcome to come to Helen Tyson on March 2nd, and I can send out invitations to you as well, because it hopefully will be a very exciting day. So we're very, we're very excited about it. I am. But I'm, I'm an author fan. But the kids are really looking forward to it as well. So yes, I'll send that out to you as well. Thank you.
It's always fun to see the results.
You know, Michelle, it really is fun. And the hardest thing about when we get our grant requests in. So the foundation now has moved to two grant cycles a year. We fund in December, and then we fund again in May. So the next grant cycle will open on March 1st. It will close on May 1st. We'll convene our grant committee, vet those grants. We'll make those awards right before the last day of school. The money will be available for teachers to procure all the items they need for their project programs over the summer and be ready to implement in the fall. The December cycle works very similarly. We just, in our December grant cycle, we funded 22 grants. The total was $29,380. So one of our largest single grant cycles we've had in quite a while. If you'll look at the sheet that went around to you, there's a couple, there's a couple items in there that we're really pleased with. The first of which is at the very top, because we, you know, you want your big numbers at the top. This grant cycle surpassed, we tipped over the $2 million mark of total funds given back to the district in the form of grants and scholarships. You can go down and see where that's broken up at $1,428,000 in grants and $686,000 in scholarships. That's 20, that's 528 individual scholarships paid. Now, we'll tell you, that's not 528 kids, because about half of the scholarship funds that we hold are in four-year renewable scholarships. So one of those counts for four awards, if a child receives that throughout their college career. That does come up to over 250 total classroom grants awarded. The number I'm really most pleased about is in the lower right-hand corner. The 2021 grants, the red bar is the number of grant requests we received throughout the year, and the orange bar is the number that we were fund, that we were able to fund. And you can see that there were only five that we received throughout the year that we were not, that we did not fund. 38 represents the largest number of grants we've ever funded in a single year. So I think that speaks a lot to, we're getting better at vetting the grants, but we're getting better at communicating the types of grants that we want to fund. And district employees are getting better at asking for specific things that they know are fundable. The other number that I'm real pleased about is the scholarship number. We were down, a little bit down to 69 kids. COVID had a huge impact in that. But we were, we're on track to fund between $95,000 and $100,000 a year in student scholarships. And if you'll look up and do the math, it took from our first year, 2011, all the way to 2000, through 2014, before we were awarded 100,000 ever cumulative. And so now we're at about 100,000 a year.
You know what I think would be neat to know at the end of our grant cycle is to know the number of students impacted by the grants that were given in that.
So on average, we hit about a fourth of all the kids in the district in every grant cycle. So, you know, rough numbers, we hit around 5,000 to 6,000, 7,000 kids a year, a year in our grants that we fund. We're currently working on a project to disaggregate all of our scholarship numbers, to get a better feel for what our recipients look like and have looked like over the years. And so I'll be glad to come back at a later date and report that back out to you. But we're learning a lot more about our grants and our grantees. We're trying to find better ways to communicate that. We're trying to, Trent has been a huge asset in pushing out. I think you guys have seen the results of all of our stuff is being pushed out. We're getting a lot more response with that. And so we, you know, that, that has worked very, very well, and we're very grateful for that partnership. So I'm open to any questions, any thoughts, comments. Outstanding. Well, thank you all for your support. And if you ever need anything, we're just right across the way. Come see us.
Thank you very much.
This is Cook, well, Mr. Hayes is kind of, oh, I just found out right before the board meeting that there is a musical that is happening tonight, and some of our counselors who are here like to see their children in the musical. And if it's okay with you, I'd like for Mr. Hayes to allow.
That would be awesome.
Donnell.
Yeah.
Come forward.
Yes, let's do it quickly.
Talk about the most wonderful people in the world tonight.
So that they can get, yes, thank you for letting us know that.
We can just kind of go in reverse.
Yep. Come on up here and just line up on either side.
Several of you want to come on this side, too?
Would you like? Okay.
That'd be great. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of recognizing our school counselors. Governor Asa Hutchinson proclaimed this week, February 7th through the 27th through the 11th, as National School Counselor Week in Arkansas to focus public attention on the unique contribution of school counselors within the U.S. school system and how students are different as a result of what they do. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students meet their college and career aspirations. And the governor encourages our citizens to recognize school counselors employed in public schools throughout Arkansas for their significant contributions to their children's futures. And I gotta tell you, I get to work with these individuals weekly, and they are amazing folks. I mean, from Anzaga at Sonora Middle School to Heather Byrne, who, let me just tell you, who's taught me everything I know about scheduling. I mean, she, she, I called, I had her on speed dial when I was administrator, to Erica Fuentes at George Elementary, to Coralene Flanagan, and she's at George Elementary. If I miss something, tell me. George Elementary, Sonora Middle School, DTSY, and SHS. And virtual. That's right. And then Katie Jenkins, who's at Shaw, who's just over the top, and then Anique Downing. The list would not be complete without Anique. So I just tell you, I get to work with these guys every day, and we meet once a month for the last, what, two years? And I'll just say, I'm honored to be a part of their team and to have worked with them. And they do amazing things for not only students, but for families and staff as well, each and every day, that are just amazing things. I'd like the board, if you have any questions for these amazing individuals, just ask away. Or if you guys have anything you'd like to share. Yeah.
I do have a question. Out of all of you, what makes you want to be a school counselor? I mean, did you know it was gonna be as crazy and as hard and as, I mean, especially during a COVID year?
No. I also have to speak, I, I feel like I'm somehow target to address the needs of the whole child. And so I'm not limited to, not that any teacher is limited by the needs that they address, but I think we find the most success when we can support families, find community resources that help, and encourage those kids to see their full potential. So I feel like I get to do that every day for the whole school, and that's a blessing to me.
I taught for 12 years and coached. And so there, when I left coaching after having children, there was that void. And the school counseling torch really helped me fulfill that and continue to coach our kids through just bigger things and more diverse things than just the sports that I was involved with.
I've been a teacher, too, and a building administrator. So I had a very unique perspective on the kind of support that teachers need in the building to be the best that they can be. So counseling became a passion for me because not only could I make a difference in the individual child's life, but you also do become support for families. You become support for teachers. And that makes the whole system more utter. So that's what was attractive to me.
I moved here from Jonesboro. My husband and I, we're the Dr. Jeff Flanagan, who's the principal at Georgia Junior High. So I was an administrator for seven years and came here to Springdale, from Jonesboro, and came back into the school counseling role. So for me, it's been really eye-opening, leaving the role of administration and coming back into counseling, and hoping that I appreciated the school councils that I had in my building when I was there in Jonesboro. And so it's been an honor to be here and just working with all the school councils here in Springdale and working with the system and Mr. Donnell. It's just been amazing. So thank you.
So do you like Martha Sturman, so?
I do.
I really do.
We're definitely glad you're here.
Thank you.
I love connecting with the students, forming relationships with them, their parents, their families, the teachers, all of our staff members. They just, being able to address the whole child and to provide additional support for them socially and emotionally, and just, you know, resource-wise, connecting with social workers, admin, other counselors, other colleagues, staff members. It's just, I love it. That's the only way I can put it. I love this work. I love our kids. I love this district. And that's, that's what I'm here for.
I think it's a truly, all of us here represent a whole lot of education, a whole lot of years of toil and trouble and, and solving problems, because lots of times, that's what we spend a lot of our day doing, is helping, it might just be one student, or it might be a group of students, but we are the, the problem solvers of our building, I think, more than anything else. And so it's, this is a very unique job, and not just anybody can do this job, but, but I do think it's got a lot of blessings and a lot of, you know, some days you go home and you're just like, you know, I'm so happy. And some days you go home and you're just like, oh, my gosh, I can't have another day like this. But, but I will say this, more than anything in the last five years, or well, and really, not even five, they haven't been here very long, but the addition of social workers for us has been the best and most impactful addition to our district. And I will continue to advocate, please, 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 when it comes back around, we're gonna talk about adding more social workers. We want more, because I, mine is awesome. Alina Anema is mine, and, and she has helped me, more than anything, to release me from doing so much for the family. I can call her, and she can, she hooks up my families with whatever resources they need, and that frees me up to do a lot of other things. And so I, I would highly recommend how many, whenever we can hire more social workers, I'll do them. All of you!
This time of year, I have a social worker, and it has changed my life. It's, they're amazing, and the teamwork is incredible. But I'm just so thankful to be in a district that I feel like supports us as counselors and values social emotional learning and values our staff and our students so highly that I feel like I have the freedom to do my job the best that I know how to do it, because I've never been anything less supportive here.
So the social worker idea is from these two people right here.
Exactly.
And a couple, three, four years ago, what do you think about this idea? What's the worst that could happen if it didn't work? And look.
And I wanna, I wanna emphasize that word, team. These folks work with our social workers as a team, as a unit. It is, it's amazing, the work that you can do as a team member. One, maybe not so much, but when you get a team together, you can make, you can make a difference in a family's life.
We are incredibly thankful for all of you and all of the rest of our counselors throughout the district. And I hope that throughout this week and this month, you see what an incredible blessing you are to your students, your families, and your schools.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Tonight, I'd like to recognize some more of our community partners that have moved forward with some donations from Mayborn USA Incorporated. They donated two pallets of supplies to our students and families. Namida Labs also donated supplies. And Samaritan Community Center, I want to make sure I'm being real clear about this one, 31,345 snack packs since the beginning of the school year. 31,000, that's amazing. And also just some more others. Natural State Pest Control, if you don't know Trent Rager, I highly encourage you to pick up the phone and call him. He is amazing for our school district. Anytime a family needs any kind of service, he steps up and does it. Absolutely no questions asked. Amazing individual in our community. Community Clinic, Judge Simmons, Judge Simmonson, he's also amazing. They donated a lot of supplies to us just in the last month or so. And then Harps Foods employees in Debbie Creek donated another $1,000 to the Treehouse Pantry to support students and families in the school district. And we keep that, that Harps Food shelf full of food. And as our social workers, nurses, and counselors come in, they can gather that up and take that to families, which has been a really blessing for us. Another big blessing for us has been on the Walmart Foundation Grant that I can now make official, that we were just awarded $329,900 to the Treehouse Pantry for the Walmart Foundation Grant. And that will allow us to purchase fresh produce and meats and whole grains, a refrigerated box truck with the Treehouse, that Treehouse logo that you see there will be on the side of that, on that box truck, and then also a van with the logo wrap on it as well. So those will be two fantastic additions to our school district. So now our social workers, counselors, and nurses won't have to travel to the Treehouse Pantry. We'll also be able to fund two cultural food warehouse liaisons. And I know that's a big mouthful, but we're just calling them CFWLs right now. And I know, I know. Another, another acronym. We are acronym crazy in education. I know that for sure. We are really excited about this because we'll be able to have a delivery schedule, much like Walmart delivery. So we'll deliver out to schools, and that'll be phase three of the Treehouse Pantry of getting to phase five. And so we're super excited about that. We're also super excited about next week, on the 16th, a drive-through food giveaway event for 400 families on that date. I think we're about 260 signed up right now. So any ones that, we really shoot for 10 families per school, and then any extras that we have, we'll open that up with, Mr. Trent Jones has always been a great partner with us to open that up and allow any of our staff that would like to sign up for that as well. Just some really great things going on in the district, and I want to thank Dr. Cleveland for his vision for this. I remember, he probably doesn't remember this, but we all went over to that Treehouse Pantry building, and he's like, here it is! And I remember walking in there, and I was like, yeah, I'm not so sure about this. But I'm gonna tell you, his vision was critical for this to happen, and it is there, and it's happening, and making a difference in, in students' lives. So thank you all for everything that you do. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
The CTFLs have to have CDLs?
I knew you were gonna ask something like that. Yes, that would be a good thing. I hadn't thought about it, but yes, I would say yes. Anything else?
And if they have to have CDLs, I'm just talking about it.
Now there'll be, there'll be CFWLs with a CDL. Thank you, guys.
It's your turn.
Oh, sure. No problem. Okay. Board, the first item that I have for you this evening is the January financial report. As I've stated to you on more than one occasion, at this time of year, our revenues are ahead of expenditures, but by the end of the year, we'll be all caught back up. But our revenues are looking good, about in line with where they have been traditionally. Our expenditures are right there as well, so I'm feeling really good about this year so far. But if you have any specific questions, I'll be But if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I could bore you with some specific facts, but I mean, we're looking good.
Board, any questions? Do you have a motion?
To approve the financials as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the January 2022 financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question passed.
Thank you. This wasn't on the agenda, but I just found out this number today, so I wanted to share it with you. Our second quarter, we, we've just had to report, ADM stands for average daily membership. That's how we're funded. And so it's kind of, you can think of it as enrollment. That's, that's as close as it can be. So in 1920, you can see our quarter one enrollment was 22,131 for grades K through 12, and that's our high point. And then the quarter two went down about 40 students in 1920, which is typical. We tip, we tend to lose students as the year progresses. In 2020, 21, which was COVID, the first year of COVID, you can see that our first quarter dropped around 300 students over the previous year. The second quarter dropped an additional 40, which was typical. Now we move into 21, 22. I was, we were all hoping that we would rebound and head back to where we were pre-pandemic. That did not happen. In many other districts, it did happen, just so you know. So we're a little unusual in that. We were down another 150 students in the first quarter compared to last year first quarter. However, quarter two has increased. You can see it's up 62 students over quarter one, which is different from the previous two years, and it's outside the norm a little for us. I just found out this number today, so I can't, in fact, I haven't even shared it with Dr. Cleveland. So I don't have specifics as to, well, why are we up? I'm just thankful we're up and I'll take it. So hopefully we're headed back toward pre-pandemic numbers. That's my hope.
Are those numbers spread across the?
That's just it. I, I just called Jacob Helt.
I was talking about that quarter two, with quarter, even with quarter one, were we seeing numbers across the board or was there a specific grade that was?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that. I can tell you that our kindergarten class is larger than last year. Last year we were around 1475, which is the lowest it's been since I've been here. And this year, I haven't looked recently, but I know it's around 1575 to 1600. So I was hoping for even more than that, but once again, it's headed in the right direction.
The next year will be really interesting. I think the country in its entirety has got about a million kids. So it'll be interesting to watch what happens over the next year, if they'll come back to school or they don't.
Right, right. Anyway, I wanted to share that. It's good news. We're headed back in the right direction, so I'm, I'm excited about that. So can we go to the next slide there, Dean? The next item that I have for you, I'm just sharing with you, you know, the voters approved for us to refinance our debt and we did that with a Series A back in July. And so Series B will be the remainder of our debt to be refinanced. And keep in mind that at the end of this, at the end of both of these series, it will have generated $90 million that we are using to, for the projects at Springdale High School, Southwest Junior High, Central Junior High, and then George Elementary Media Center. Those were the four projects that we were going to be able to use this 90 million in order to take advantage of the 35, I'm rounding numbers, 35 million of state partnership funding in order for us to have those four projects. So this is the timeline. We're projected to have the second sale on February 23rd. The board would sign the documents at the next meeting and then the closing date would be on March 30th. We talked a little about, is now the right time? Should we try to delay? You know, what's, what's the best time? But they, we are seeing a slight increase or creep up in rates. And so we felt like we needed, this was the original timeline and we decided it was best just to stay with that. Any questions on, on that? All right. So be looking forward to hearing about that next month. We'll be able to share with you the rates that we received as well as get some documents signed. So next is Mr. White.
Hello, Board. Dr. Cleveland. We're far enough along on the construction that we feel comfortable to give a extended report tonight. So if you guys have questions, you can just, just ask me and I, I should be able to answer. I have Baldwin and Shell and Flint Co. here, so if there's answers I don't have, they, they will have. So first of all is Central Junior High. So this is just a rendering of, of the exterior of the building. So we did pass large scale last week at the city of Springdale, so we have that approval. The architects are, are processing and finalizing the plans and we're going to send those to the State Facilities Division, State Fire Marshal, Health Department on February 9th for their approval. This normally takes about two weeks to get their approval back. You know, it could take longer, but, but we're planning on two weeks. We're working with the architects and the, and the Baldwin Shell and the building admin to resolve a few issues that, that we're going to have after demolition starts. So at Central, those issues are going to be parking, athletics, the kitchen, and then a few classroom spaces. So what we've done, we, we've already put in a 40-foot storage container for agri to, to use for the equipment that they don't need every day. So they'll switch that equipment in and out. Baldwin and Shell is going to be adding a temporary parking area on the west side of the school because we will lose some parking once the demolition starts. So that, that will help gain some parking. I've talked with Dr. Lofton about a weight, weight room area for the kids to use for the next year. We've, I've talked to, to Dr. Lofton about making classroom spaces in the building for the three teachers that are going to be relocated. We don't think that's going to be a problem. I talked with Baldwin and Shell today. It looks like we're going to keep the gym to be able to use that for practices throughout the year. We're going to try to get in there this summer, remodel it and have it ready for when school starts. So we'll never use, we'll, we won't use, lose the use of the gym at Central. I've been in talks with Wayne. There's a possibility we'll have to play the games out at Harbor because of the lack of parking at Central. So we'll, we'll have more talks on that once the schedules get verified. I have been working with Gina Smith on creating a new kitchen area at Central, so we don't lose any food service options for the kids. You guys have anything else? Any questions for Central? This is showing just the layout of Central when it's finalized.
So that last one faces Huntsville? That last picture, the front?
If you, that, that faces Gutten Son. So, so yeah, if you're on Gutten Son, you'll be looking right at the main office is, is where the C is.
So can I add, so far, Mr. Tenny's here, he does some really good work value engineering the building, at the same time keeping the building standard very high. And is it appropriate to say that we're a little under budget?
Easy.
Which, that's new. That's a new thing. So we, we're really proud of that and we appreciate Baldwin and Shell's partnership.
Yes.
Along with our architects, they're doing an outstanding job.
Yes.
We still have to get through a bid day, but that's your problem, not ours.
Now we have that lighting and
He's hedging his bets, aren't we?
Yeah, so once we get the approval from the state, it'll take about a month to, for the bids to go out and everything to get back, for us to get bids.
Can we flip it back to the other picture? Sure. Okay, because I want to.
So the main gym, you, you can see where it's at. It's actually going to be the closest to Huntsville other than the cafeteria. You know, so the building's moving south.
It's like we flipped the H-legs to the other side. And it is two-story.
But we're starting everything this way first?
We're starting south of the main gym. So June 1st, if, if we get all approvals on time, we will actually demo, demo the kitchen, the auxiliary gym, the agri room, and then two classrooms to the west. Those will get demoed this summer when nobody's there. And then we'll put up construction walls, seal the building, and then we'll build everything south of there.
So is this, is this the original building right here?
That's the original, yep.
Also, Board, the building will be asbestos-free, which, that's a good thing.
Yep. Okay. Nothing else? Okay.
This, that, that facility is still a miracle that it's even happening, in my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah, and that one's going to be the, the toughest because it's, it's just landlocked. We're, the only piece of the property that we're not going to disturb is the practice field.
I feel the coach appreciates that.
Yeah, yeah.
That pulled in and out of Huntsville, that's terrible. Yeah. Just that that's going to be gone.
Okay. So this is Southwest. It, it's the same. We've made it through large-scale development with the city of Springdale. The architects are finalizing the plans and we're planning on sending those down to the state on February 17th. We're working with the, the architects and the, and the CMs and the building staff to resolve a few issues there also. Their issues are going to be athletics, band choir, and then a few classrooms. So we have met with the mayor and his staff about using the youth center for practices for, for Southwest Junior High, and that looks very promising. Like Central, we've been working with Wayne, the possibility of playing all the games at Harbor. We've met with the building, we will be meeting with the building principal this week to look at a solution for band and choir, possibly an area in the existing building. We're trying to secure some portable classrooms for that facility. And then we have already put two 20-foot storage containers there for them to start putting unused equipment in so we can get it out of the construction zone.
So where in the original building is there big enough space to sing and do bad?
Well, we're going to, we're going to look at several options, possibly putting in some movable walls, possibly library. I don't, we're just going to have to look. There's other options we have, you know, we want to keep it as close as we can, just so it's convenient for the classes.
It's hard to do band and choir in portable, so we thought it would be best to have them in building. So since the building's being removed later anyway, if there are non-load-bearing walls, we could take some walls out and create larger spaces under the current roof. That's kind of what we were thinking.
Yeah. I can, like the tactile panels that's in the existing, we can remove and reinstall temporarily into an area if, if that's what makes the most sense.
We want to make sure that the arts programs are not negatively impacted at all. They're, they're a huge priority for us.
And Southwest, we will be tearing, we'll be demoing the, the south campus, everything but the main gym. But we will be at, putting back a, the, the athletic building. We'll be getting it put back in before school starts.
You mean like the field house though?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Rebuilding that down by the football field.
Yeah, it gets relocated. So that will help with some of the issues.
Trying to get rid of, what do they call it, Lake Southwest or whatever that's?
Yeah, yeah, there's some drainage issues. You can go to the next slide. So, so this, this layout, it's, it's a longer building because we have to keep the original north building in use and keep the kids safe. And then we have the property line on the south that, that butts up to the church. So that's the reason this building is, is the shape it is, is because we're having to work around property lines and existing buildings. So you can see the main gym, the, the main gym's on the left. And then that, those are new locker rooms to the west of it.
There?
Uh-huh. So that's the reason that gym won't be accessible because we wouldn't have a safe path for students to get in and out of it. We'll be doing constructions on the east and the west side of it. And when we tear that building down, we're going to have issues having utilities to run that, that existing space.
Office.
The, the office? It's right in, right?
There?
Yes. Yep. To the left of that, the purple. That's your main entrance. Yeah.
Oh, so we're leaving it there? Okay.
So this building, it will also come back to the south and it, it'll go over to the east more than the, the existing building. So the new, the new locker rooms, football locker rooms and athletic lockers will be to the east of this building. So the, the press box and the track and everything's east, east of this building.
So that's what's being built over this end?
Yes, ma'am. And we just had a long process on this one and we're just under budget too, which is also new. Right, Mr. Tenny?
A little work.
Yeah.
I love watching your faces when you
Start squirming. It's just so rare.
I mean, it is a complicated process, but it is an amazing, for those of us that went to these schools in the Stone Age.
Yep.
I mean, seriously.
They're going to
To just think about, I mean, it, it makes me so excited to see.
That had been touched in forever.
They're going to be very nice once it's done. It's, it's going to be a challenge for a couple of years, but it'll be well worth it when it's done.
We will see progress quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Once we get the approvals, I mean, we're planning on, on moving dirt as soon as possible, even before school gets out, because there's a lot of areas that we can get to and, and work on, but while, while class is going. So Southwest has a lot more area, you know, for us to, to move and do, and do work in and not disturb the school.
You'll see, you'll see us on site if both schools work in, maybe even during the summer.
Yeah. It really, it's if we can get that final approval, th- then we can get going.
No demolition until after.
Not on the buildings. We're not doing any, we're not going to disturb any of the, of the teachers and the, and the athletics.
Jeremy's already advised us of all the testing dates.
Yeah. We've got all the testing blocked out, so if we do construction, those days will be no work during testing. Yeah.
So what are the completion dates on those projects?
Summer of 2024. We want to, we want to be able to have a little time for us to get the furniture and everything in place before school starts.
That's the state deadline.
Do what?
Where's the state deadline on them?
Money has to be expended. There are some also.
Yeah.
The first part of Southwest has to be stated by the government, spring of 2024, and that's the early years.
And we've got all those deadlines down. That's like 30%. So we've got the deadlines that we have to meet for, for the state. And then they will come up the fall of 2024 and inspect everything that we've built to make sure we built what we said we was going to build. Okay? Okay, so this is Springdale High School. Dusty's gave us a, a few new renderings. This actually has elevation change from the existing parking lot to get into the, to the gym and, and the classroom. and, and the classroom wing. So, this one is also, it's went through large scale with the city. They're gonna be submitting it to Little Rock on February 18th. And then, our main concerns here are athletics, PE space, and then classroom space. So, we have four portable classrooms onsite that we're working on to have those ready by August. So, the, so you're in the, you would be in the east parking lot, looking back to the north.
South football field.
Yep. So, yeah, the, the section that's there to the right that has the balconies, that's looking directly onto the football field. So, so by keeping that existing parking lot, that's where we get the 30 inches of elevation change. That's why there's stairs and ramps to get up to the lobby.
We expect over time to redo the parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, and we're, we're working with the SHS administrators to try to find a place for the athletics to practice and have PE space throughout the year. And like I said, we already have trailers onsite, and we're getting ready for staff. So...
The thing is, Archer is basically on campus, too. So, be able to utilize the gym early in the morning prior to Archer opening. So, that's a good thing to consider.
You can go to the next one. So, there's the interior of it. All the academic wings, two-story. Yeah, on the bottom of the screen. That's your academic wing. It's got an upstairs and a down. And then, you've got locker rooms and concession that wrap around the gyms. And then, there, there is a two-story part of the main gym.
Even in our last meeting, meeting with Clint Coe and Mr. Graham with Core Architecture, there is a second-story viewing balcony that you can see the football field. And we've come up with the idea for Dusty to take that second-story viewing area and reach out to the student section to look into the gym as well. So, it's new. I don't think you see it there. But, the rendering he shot me as a text the other day, amazing. So, I look forward to see how they finish that out. So, if you hold the state tournament, it's also hospitality opportunity.
And Dusty's bringing a lot of the auxiliary gym into this gym as well.
Meaning the floor?
Yeah, some, some of the wood, some of the stone that's on the front will, will be in this building. So, and I think you met with Dusty, didn't you, Randy? So, he, he's doing, he's doing right in this project. Yep, he is. Okay. So, this one, this one's a little further behind schedule than, than the others. We've been focusing on the three major ones. This one's a smaller renovation addition. So, it's at George Elementary. So, this would be coming right out of the front of the school. And so, we've been working with Core Architects and then Milestone on this. And I've worked with the building staff admin to finalize the plans and get everything like they need it. So, this actually, we've got the drawings done. It's sent over to Milestone so they can start the estimating process to see what kind of budget we're looking at.
Like a tile or a rock or what is...
Those are architectural metal panels. And you can go to the next rendering. So, there, there's about a 30-foot separation between the existing building and then this addition. And this will be library, media center, and office space. And the blue section above that is the existing library. And what I talked with Mr. Swope was making, we can make that into two classrooms. And so, we can gain two classrooms there. And then, if we remodel the old counseling area, that would become a third extra classroom. So, he would gain three classrooms and the new space. And then, we also looked at adding a freezer cooler at George Elementary because theirs are undersized. So, while we're in there working, we can do that work, too. And like I said, this is, it's pretty early stages of, of design, but it's gonna be a pretty easy project to get going and finish up fairly quickly.
Especially compared to the other three.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Now, in most experiences, depending on what school district you're in, that's, that's a major project.
That is a major project.
It's about 8,700 square feet.
It just feels small compared to other ones. We, we probably have the most aggressive, I would say, the most aggressive building program currently in a compact period of time. Little Rock's doing some really great things, trying to reconfigure and do some other things, but as far as...
Last time it was...
Time one.
Was when we did the three all at the same...
Harbor, Hellstern, and Hunt? I remember.
Fondly, right?
Yeah.
So, as long as we've addressed, you know, Central and Southwest, as long as we've addressed making sure that we keep the arts in place, keep the athletics in place.
And feed them.
Yeah.
And feed them, yes. I think we're gonna be okay.
Yeah. So, we've, we've been working on all of that, coming up with the best solution we can. And I think they're all doable.
And making sure we communicate with all the interested parties.
Yeah.
The coaches and the band directors and all that good stuff.
Yeah, a lot of this, we've been waiting to get like definite schedules because everything, you know, there's a lot of unknowns on material. And, I mean, even at the state, what we're worried about, all the districts have to report their master plan on February 1st. And then, that's when we're asking for approvals. So, we're afraid they may be behind down there to, to get our approvals. So... It could, it could push everything out. So, that's a lot of the, the reason we haven't done a big update on these is just because of the unknowns. But, we're so close now to the approvals. Feel pretty comfortable updating.
Do you have any questions for these gentlemen that are here, Dr. Clint Coe and Bob Marshall? They're, they're great. And I have to brag on them, too, because they have done really great work to try to get us what we believe is an accurate budget. Because, you know, us saying it's under budget, that's based on John Skill and Patrick Skill. Cartette. Really creating, creating an understanding for us to have a legitimate budget. We wanna be very transparent and exactly what it costs, exactly how much it out, we're gonna outfit, where those funds come from, and present it to you for you to review.
Patience.
Yep.
Good job.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Whoa, not quite tall enough. First of all, I just wanna take a second to compliment Jeremy. I know there's an entire enormous team of people working on this, but for me, being over secondary curriculum and instruction, all of these construction projects impact everything that I do. And it's nice to have Jeremy to work alongside him every day and to work in conjunction with our building administrators to be so forward-thinking and problem-solving. And, you know, for Jeremy to come in and say, "Hey, we'll figure out what walls we need to blow out or what temporary walls we need to put up to be able, for our kids to still have fine arts and athletics and the things that make them wanna come to school," and obviously food. But, I think, just to have the focus that Dr. Cleveland and the whole team and Jeremy and everyone has on meeting the needs of our kids, even in the midst of something like this, nothing goes to the side. And that's what makes Springdale special. So, I feel blessed to be here, so I wanted to say that. Also, as promised, I have a quick Clifton Strengths highlight for you guys tonight. And I thought it was appropriate to pick Jeremy's number-one strength tonight since he was given such a comprehensive report. And so, we'll be talking about the arranger tonight. And so, Jeremy White is not only, not the only one whose number-one strength is arranger. Melissa Fink also has that as her number-one. And then, Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Ramos, and Trent Jones also have arranger in their top five. Okay. An arranger. "You are a conductor. When faced with a complex situation involving many factors, you enjoy managing all of the variables, aligning and realigning them until you are sure you have arranged them in the most productive configuration possible. In your mind, there is nothing special about what you are doing. You are simply trying to figure out the best way to get things done. But others lacking this theme will be in awe of your ability. How can you keep so many things in your head at once? They will ask. How can you stay so flexible, so willing to show well-laid plans in favor of some brand-new configuration that has just occurred to you? But you cannot imagine behaving in any other way. You are a shining example of effective flexibility, whether you are changing travel schedules at the last minute because a better fare has popped up or mulling over just the right combination of people and resources to accomplish a new project. From the mundane to the complex, you are always looking for the perfect configuration. Of course, you are at your best in dynamic situations. Confronted with the unexpected, some complain that plans devised with such care cannot be changed, while others take refuge in the existing rules or procedures. You don't do either of those. Instead, you jump into the confusion, devising new options, hunting for new paths of least resistance, and figuring out new partnerships. Because after all, there might just be a better way." And so, for all of the, all of our arrangers, I hope that spoke to you. And so, next on our agenda is a very exciting career and technical education update. And I'm so happy to have our Director of CTE, Kelly Williamson, to be able to come before you this evening. And I'm just gonna, yes, applause for Kelly. I cannot tell you, like, you're about to see the breadth and complexity of all of the programs that Kelly helps us lead and facilitate. This lady is amazing. I learn from her every single day. And I just, I appreciate you so much, Kelly. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, I appreciate it. I love what I do, and it's a pleasure to be here. The next slide, because, yeah, I'm having to talk and do that at the same time. Yeah, so this is February, right? And this has been a new proclamation by our governor that this is CTE month. That is celebrated in a lot of different ways. So, we, there are five different areas. And agriculture, family consumer sciences, business, STEM, and trade and industry, which can include anything from our industrial maintenance programs to our welding, to nursing, and educate, well, what else am I thinking of? Lots of different things. Aviation is a new one. So, we're just honored that Governor Hutchinson would recognize that, and we are celebrating it in lots of different ways. On the next slide, the first document is, all of those underlined are links. And the first one tells a little bit about the programs that we offer in Springdale. And then, out to the side, it will have what school offers them because we don't duplicate all of our CTE programs. So, if you wanted to open that, you could see what we have. Then individually, I have listed through School of Innovation, Harbor, and Springdale what they offer in a little different way. So, if, does that link open on the first one, the SBS CTE pathways? I hope it does. I did access to anyone. So, do you all have access to that on the slides? Do you all have abilities to look at what that... I have to click, okay. So, we do have 125 CTE teachers in our district. And if you were to take 75 students, which a lot of our teachers have more than that, and multiply that out, you get over 9,000 students that are in CTE programs. So, you can see agriculture. We have five different programs. Business, we have five different ones. Family consumer sciences, lots, I think there's six there. The one that we're probably, the newest that we're most excited about is this pre-educator program. We want to grow our own. In Springdale, we have a very diverse population, and we want these students to come back and teach. We want them to get their paraprofessional. We want them to come back while they're in college, whether that be at NWhac. And there will be opportunities for them to get concurrent credit while they are at each of our three high school locations. So, we're really excited about growing our own. And this is something that the state is doing that's new. We are going to have the opportunity for them to get what's called certified teaching assistance so they could come in and sub, they could come in and maybe do lots of different things for us. So, we're working. Trent Jones, I wanna thank you for making me do this because you are the one that's always bragging about what we're doing. You're like, "Kelly, what are you doing?" And I'm like, "I'm doing a lot of stuff, Trent." And then, he's like, "Well, you need to show it." And I was like, "Okay." So, I appreciate Trent making me summarize all of that and look at it. It's really kinda overwhelming to think about all the great things that are being done. The young man that spoke to you at the beginning of today was actually part of the STEM engineering program. So, we're really excited about what that has done for him. And there's even more through the trade and industry. The, I should've said Trent AV, taking film in our TV productions. He is leading the state. And there are other states that are sitting up and paying attention to what's being done. And that is directly related to Trent Jones. He is helping write curriculum for a new course in media communications for the state. And he's just, he's just amazing. And I really appreciate, it's like the Trent Show today. Everybody's saying Trent this and that. But he really is the one that puts all of it together and showcases what we're doing. So, I just really appreciate him. The next, yes, you can exit out of that. The next one, if you just wanna, it doesn't matter which one. They're all formatted the same. It is a little bit different. Look at the bottom. There's a tab for each of the five program areas that we offer. And you can see the course codes. There is a link to what the student will actually learn. The frameworks are now, we're calling them standards. And so, a student could look at that. Their parents could look at it. You could see what grade they can take it in. And so, it's really, really cool, all the opportunities our kids have. Computer science is a big topic. And we're actually meeting with all of our computer science And we're actually meeting with all of our computer science teachers from the junior highs to the high schools to talk about best practices to make sure that when we have students, as we will do, move from one school to another high school, that they are able to communicate with one another and pick up and say, you know what? Where's the student? Okay, we're gonna plug them in because we're doing exactly the same thing at Harvard that we're doing at Springdale. So we're really having some good conversations. We have some excellent, excellent teachers. And I just think now we're gonna get some opportunities to bring in more business and industry. And hopefully COVID will allow us to have some internships so that we can get some students working. We really, that was our A number-one thing that we had with IT was internships. But because of COVID, it's really kind of halted that. But it's coming back around. And all of the frameworks, the last option for a student, we would like for them as seniors to be able to have at least an hour of career practicum where they have taken three classes within a program of study. And then that senior year, they go out and work and get some job experience. So, and some certifications along the way. So that's all I've got. Did I go over my five minutes, Trent? He's watching the ballgame. We're up by ten. But does anyone have any questions?
Great.
Very nice. Thank you.
I will email the board all of the slides I did from the meeting. So I'll access all of the slides if you'd like to.
Yes, please, thank you. SEA?
Hello, I'm good. It's good to see all of you. I'm Madeline Lomax, the President of Springdale Education Association. And so I'm here to do a report on some things that we've done within SEA. Recently, I was able to meet with Dr. Cleveland for just a little bit before school and gain a bigger perspective on what's going on within the district. And something that Dr. Cleveland does every time I see him, he's like, Madeline, why are you here? What are you doing? And I really, it puts me on the spot sometimes. But it also, it also always brings me back to my purpose. And so I wanted just to highlight that right here, that our purpose to be here is the power of connection. I saw a quote recently that said, "Every child is one caring adult away from becoming a success story." And that's why we're all here, to turn our kids' lives into success stories and to help them. So I'm here because education is a gift that no one can take away. And public education is a priority so that each and every young person in our community has an opportunity to learn. And because of that, we really want our kids to be in school. And SEA is here to advocate because we love our students and our students need their educators. We were very thankful with some of the things that were brought up at PPC. Early to mid-January, we had a big scare with Omicron. A lot of people were out, a lot of subs missing, teachers missing, students missing. I heard of elementary classes with only six kids in their classroom. And as a teacher, you're like Mama Hen to those kids. So it breaks your heart to know that they're homesick and that they can't be with you there to learn. So we found that teachers can ask their principals for their masks and that the district is willing to provide masks to teachers and kids that need them or want them. That it was proposed to add five additional COVID leave days. If that's approved, we would really appreciate it. I think that would be huge for our teachers who have been sick, especially the ones who have been sick multiple times and had, or had to take off because of family members with illness. And then just continued support with subs and bus driver shortages. We know that the effects of worker shortages are something that, it's prevalent in our society. And it's affecting the students, their families, the teachers, the admin at our buildings, and admin all the way up. So we're continuing to try to be considerate of that. AEA at the state level has been working down in Little Rock to protect teachers' health insurance. And we are asking for support that the loss of the wellness benefit doesn't hurt the certified or classified salaries. That we could figure out a way for the district to continue covering health insurance so that it's not put back on our employees. And then I just have a little word of encouragement. So while I don't know everything that y'all have on your plates right now, I do know that too often our brains fixate on the negative. There's a lot of negativity going around. It's easy to fall into a cycle of criticism and complaining. We always like to look for the ways that we are dropping the ball. So instead, just want to take a second to clap for you and for everyone in the district, from student to educator to admin to classified staff. I see your hard work and notice all the ways that you are doing your best humaning right now through everything that's going on. We aren't supposed to do it perfectly, but whatever you look for, you'll find. I hope that you focus on the good because what you focus on, you create more of. So let's look for the good, let's look for a focus on the growth that's resulted from the challenge because that's really what we all deserve. So let's just clap for everybody in the district for just a minute. It has been hard, but I know that the only way we grow and learn is through challenge. So thank you. Thank you for persevering through it all. I think that's it. Thank you.
Did Ms. Parkinson leave or she did leave?
So can I have a couple of minutes as a patron? No, go ahead.
Thank you. I've watched you guys over the last couple of months, and it's been an experience. A lot of good things have happened. The one thing that I spoke to Dr. Cleveland that I see is the board, the staff, a lot of people care about the kids. They want the kids to be educated, they want them to learn, they want them to have a normal life. So thank you for pushing that and getting kids back into schools. You started by getting back into schools early, then you started by trying to get rid of the garbage out of the COVID world that made things harder. It made it real difficult for kids to learn. There's a lot of things. One of the things I mentioned, Dr. Cleveland, is speech therapists. You know people who are speech therapists? There's gonna be problems coming up. You're hiring more. The question is, how do we get more normalcy back into life? And I'm asking the board and the administration to start looking at what's in the way. How can you remove those barriers to get those kids back to normal life every day, you know, in people's faces, talking, having fun, because that's the normal life? You mentioned academics, you mentioned fine arts. Those are important things for kids. And I just, I see outside forces and maybe some inside forces getting in the way, making it harder for you, and I'm gonna say us as a group, to see normalcy in kids. So thank you for your pushing. I know you're good people and you're doing good work. And there's a lot of you out there. Continue to fight. It's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dr. Cleveland shared with all of us maybe a month or so ago about some of the tragedy that's occurring in public education right now. Just really, really disturbing information about absenteeism, with over a million kids not in school, crime, fights, gunfights at school. And then all the political pressure of the environment of the nation right now has bled into public education. And you know, public education is one, at one time, and I still believe it is, especially in Springdale, Arkansas, one of the finest institutions ever created in our United States of America. And so that gentleman that came tonight to lead, to start the school war meeting off tonight was the exact example of public education. That you could just even, you couldn't have scripted what he told us tonight any better, right? So I just want to tell you how much I appreciate being in Springdale with a team like this. And let's call all ourselves team members instead of employees because we're all on the same team. And how fortunate we are to be in Springdale, to be in Arkansas, to be in the South and not experiencing what's happening nationally in some of these big urban areas. And it's really a travesty for the kids because adults are in charge of what's happening to the kids. And I think we never lost sight about the importance of taking care of the whole kid and the whole family in Springdale. So I think that's why we have been successful for the last two years. Now, our learning might be off, which it is, we all understand that. That's part of us learning through the situation that we had. So I just felt compelled to say that and how blessed we are in Springdale and our team we have here and the board we have here and the resource officers we have here and the community partnerships we have here. You know, even the medias are on our side here because they know the good things that we do and they know we're truthful, honest, and we have integrity. So that's my patron and board comments for the night, so I appreciate it. It's been tough, but I tried not to say the word COVID, but I maybe did. I don't want to say it again, so. I just, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for saying that.
Thank you. Dr. Cleveland, anything else?
Yeah, just thank you for a good night. Go Red Sox.
Well, with that, the meeting is adjourned and go Hogs.
Rip a twelve.